If you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands by law, under God, in this little liberty and justice for all.
So per policy BDA, we have, which is our school committee reorganizational meeting. Superintendent calls the annual organizational meeting order to allow for the election of a new chair. We'll then preside over the remainder of the meeting. When we do many of these officer votes, it will be by roll call vote. And that will be for the Chair, Vice Chair, Assistant Treasurer, and Secretary. So we'll begin, entertain a motion, nomination for Chairperson.
The Chair will make a motion to nominate Phil Disarara for Chairperson.
Second. Any discussion? All right, this requires a roll call vote. Carrie Lawrence, aye.
Phil Disarara, aye.
Pass this over.
Look at that. Thank you.
Definitely it's, uh...
I had to pay.
It's only on the same range.
So I will, so now we'll go into the next set of roles. The next one being the Vice Chair, I'll entertain a motion for nomination for Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairperson, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Eric Brown as our Vice Chairperson.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call vote. Sean Nicholson, aye.
Carrie Lawrence, aye.
Phil Disarara, aye.
Matt Hagan, aye.
Ready? Eric Brown is a nice one, he's absent. I'll entertain a motion to nominate the Secretary. I know that both you nominated, suggested you were willing to do it. So, but I also know Sean's in there and things like that, they're there. But we've talked about it or thought about it, it was good because we were all about sharing the love.
We're going to do, we're going to do the Treasury.
I nominate Carrie Lawrence for, second, sir. Second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Roll call vote, then Sean Nicholson, aye.
Carrie Lawrence, aye.
Phil Disarara, aye.
Matt Hagan, aye.
All right, I need a motion for the Assistant Treasurer. If Sean has made all the documents and forms, that would be the sort of thing that is the...
Chairman, I'll make a motion to nominate Sean Nicholson as Assistant Treasurer.
Second.
Here, any discussion? Roll call vote, Sean Nicholson, aye.
Aye.
Phil Disarara, aye.
Matt Hagan, aye.
All right, yeah, we get into the next ones. We need a half library trustee. This is for the, for Menden. So, and that's where it's going to help, so meeting nomination, half library trustee.
I'm fine with doing that again. That's, if someone else wants to do it, that's fine as well, but I have a little relationship going with the crew over there, so.
Awesome. Then I'd like to make a motion to nominate Sean Nicholson as a half library trustee.
Second. Ready? Any discussion? Roll call vote, Sean Nicholson, aye.
Carrie Lawrence, aye.
Phil Disarara, aye.
Matt Hagan, aye.
All right, then the next one is the Ristin Fund Representative. I've been that person in the past. Ristin Fund is a trust fund that sometimes provides money used for educational purposes and other kind of options. So I have to continue with it. Just need a motion.
Motion to nominate Phil Disarara as the library, the Taft Library, sorry.
Ristin.
Ristin Fund Representative.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, roll call vote, Sean Nicholson, aye.
Carrie Lawrence, aye.
Phil Disarara, aye.
Matt Hagan, aye.
All right. I will entertain a motion to nominate the Treasurer. Past, so I'll just continue with that.
I'm going to motion to nominate Joe Lakey as the Treasurer.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, roll call vote, Sean Nicholson, aye.
Carrie Lawrence, aye.
Phil Disarara, aye. And I'll entertain a motion to nominate the Clerk of the School Committee.
I'll make a motion to nominate Kelly McElriff as the Clerk to the School Committee.
Second. All right, any discussion? Roll call vote, Sean Nicholson, aye.
Carrie Lawrence, aye.
Phil Disarara, aye.
Matt Hagan, aye.
And then the Blackstone Valley Educational Consortium Representative. You know, it's been Maureen in the past, it's typically helped by the Supreme Court, so. Should you be helped by Maureen? Just need a motion.
Motion to nominate Maureen as the... Blackstone Valley Educational Consortium Representative.
Second, great, any discussion?
No.
All right, roll call vote.
Sean Nicholson, aye.
Carrie Lawrence, aye.
Phil Disarara, aye.
Matt Hagan, aye.
All right. And I know we have, the next round will be the Subcommittee Appointments. Maybe we do this all as one, do we need a vote, or?
Yes, so you, the appointment is by the, and the policy says appointments by the Chair, but it's by a vote of the whole committee. But I think you could do it as a grouping, or you could just do it each one. You do not need a roll call vote.
So why don't I do it as a whole group? We have the following appointments, the proposal for the following set of appointments that we need to go on. Budget Subcommittee, Eric Brown, Sean Nicholson, and myself. Policy Subcommittee, Vicki Levinson, Matt Hagan, Carrie Lawrence. Negotiation Subcommittee, Eric Brown, Vicki Levinson, and myself. Superintendent Evaluation Committee, Carrie Lawrence, Hagan, and Sean Nicholson. And the Golden Apple Subcommittee, Carrie Lawrence. Or we'll just continue to do it like we do before, which is basically everybody there.
She put it as her first choice, so I wanted to honor that and also was a first choice.
Yes.
I tried to give first and second choices.
We'll say Carrie Lawrence and the rest of the committee, okay? Could I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, let me end it, we're there.
We are done.
Now we are done with the reorganization. Community comments. Do we have any community comments from anybody here today? No, anybody online?
Quiet.
Quiet, getting to the end, getting to the end.
I got yelled at, so I'm going to yell.
Okay. Then with that, we'll move to student comments.
Excellent.
Who are representatives?
So, this, this week I have a lot of senior upgrades, as it's seniors last week in school. So my first comment is about senior music night. Senior Music Night is this Wednesday at seven. And this is basically an occasion where seniors, senior musicians perform an arrangement of music of their choice with an ensemble of their choice. And it's also a night where senior musicians are recognized for their time with the department, you know, ranging from senior year all the way back to fifth grade, some instances. And also where their achievements are honored as well. Next up is the Last Day. Seniors' Last Day is Thursday. So seniors will be saying goodbye to their teachers, their friends, and also participating in the drive arounds. So that happens directly after school. They just drive around, parts of the school, everyone's outside saying goodbye. Next is the Senior Trip. That's happening this Friday, and they're heading to Boston. In Boston, the seniors will go to Boda Borg, which is where they'll participate in a fun, interactive type of escape room. And then they'll go, they will end the night with a dinner cruise. And then just one last update about the music department. On Memorial Day, which is weekly today, the marching band will perform in the Upton Grade. Not the Menden Grade like they did in the years past, it's just the Upton Grade this Memorial Day. And also, I would just like to take this time to say goodbye and thank you to the committee, as this is my last meeting, I'll attend as the student representative. It's really been a pleasure and incredible experience, you know, going to these meetings and representing that year. So I definitely learned a lot about local politics and such. And I'll definitely miss my time here, so thank you very much.
Very well done.
We look forward to having to take over the board.
All right, I'll have to follow that. The first thing up is the Q and A box that me and Michael set up in the NIMCO front office. So this is a place where students are able to put in any comments, suggestions, or questions into the box. And then Michael and I will check it at the end of every week. And then we'll answer any questions that we know. This is a way to reach out to as many people as possible. And we also wanted to create a safe space if they're unable to come up to us or any other adults, they can probably just drop that in the box and we'll reach out to them. And then there is a computer science showcase tomorrow from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM in the NIMCO Media Center. So this will feature student-created apps, apps on the MIT's App and Venture Program. And it also has independent study work by computer science students. There's also a group of students who have been working on the CUP SAT Challenge through MIT's Lindgren Global Challenges. And they'll show up at work on the next.
Great. Thank you. Now we're going to do some fast footwork as I back up to go forward. Ready? I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I will make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
I also need a motion to approve the minutes of last meeting, 5:09.
Make a motion to approve minutes from May 9th, 2022.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now we're going to jump back. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Cole.
Right, thank you. Terrible thing. So, you gave your speech about, so I'm trying to think of the time, but I want to thank Michael for your service in this whole year. I had this vision of expanding, thank you School Committee for supporting it, expanding the roles. And both of you have stepped into it just in the most perfect way. One thing that I really appreciated about you at the table is how engaged you are, how you ask questions, and I think, oh, yeah, I should have asked that question. But no, you're, you ask excellent questions, you're always engaged. But the fact that both of you have been able to come forward and say, hey, I have an idea, or I throw out, there's an MASC training all day on Saturday for students, I just got a notice, do you want to participate? And you say, yeah, all right, that sounds great, and then you come back down, it's great, I want to share that. So it's really exciting, and maybe one day we will be on School Committee, because I once did the student seat, and you never know what can lead to, you may need YouTube that happens in the future. This is a little token, something by, probably some books or something in the future. But we really have loved having you here, and just thank you again for being a great student model for everything. One thing, just thinking forward, we were talking about whether or not, so we did the nominations for this in the fall last year, so we're going to talk to see if it makes sense to do it in this last month. We talked about some, a lot of districts do it that way, or should we wait and do it in the fall? So we're connecting, I'm going to talk to Mrs. Morgan and just see what they think might be the best timing, because we did do a thorough process with interviews and want people to not get rushed, but yet, you know, be able to jump in to have another member next year. So thank you. District highlights. I think this is the first time, maybe we didn't share the same ones, which is great.
I saw.
I thought if I put it in there, then maybe you wouldn't steal all this time. So, you know, we talked a lot about International Night. One thing that I loved about International Night that we had on May 12th, and that's hosted by the Spanish Version Advisory Board, but with lots of parents and other student volunteers. It felt like pre-COVID in a way, you know, I mean, it's like it's back, and you had all the performances and the smiles, and I was watching the younger, you know, siblings of their peers who were on stage. And I was sitting with some moms of third graders, and we were talking about this and all the incantable songs. And, you know, I wish I, you know, practiced more, I'd be up there. But it just was such a celebration, and it was nice to see it back fully after the last couple of years. So that was great, that we had fast, granted the students can speak more to the experience of it. But I always love, for those of you who weren't aware, so it's been around for a while, the faculty and students together. We brought it back, May 19th, just this past week, and they had lots of minute-to-win-it competitions. I come into the auditorium, and who is the emcee, but Michael Planigan? So, and we have student council reps that were running it and competitions, hula hoops, I had a teacher say, you know, I'm exhausted from the hula hoop competition because the teachers get involved, which I really like. You don't always have teachers involved in some of these types of activities in schools. So it's one of those standout fun events that we do and haven't really fully been able to do, and that was nice to see as well. Just lots of exciting events. Misco Hill Amusement Park, and I'm sure Dr. Quinn can talk a little bit more about this after and some of the setup for it. But Britt Kaler led her tech students through an engineering design process where they created mechanical amusement park rides. And so I got an invite, I walk in, and it's like you're walking through your entire amusement park, and they all have crafted these designs, motorized. It's better if you had all the videos to kind of see, I have some basic pictures that I've shared on Twitter, et cetera. But just the creativity, some rides were called like the Death Spiral, I wouldn't recommend it. They said some people have been hurt on it, but it was great. And it just highlights a lot of the ASA grant funding that we've had, Project Lead the Way, and some, it's coming to light, a lot of the programming we've been working on. And just by chance, when I was at the elementary schools this past week in my walk group, in one, I saw club students engaged in the community garden, and it was all full of weeds. And so they had just come out, and they were going to learn how to weed. And so they went, is this a weed, is this a weed? It's dirty, and next you know, you have 20 students who are in and really excited, and the expressions and the smiles. It actually was just a moment of joy to see them engage, and they'd never done that before. And I also happened upon at Memorial, where we had a second grade class that had, were studying the butterfly life cycle, and they certainly could probably tell you more about it than I can. However, I happened upon, I came to the school the next day, and they were all releasing the butterflies, but the butterflies wouldn't fly away, so they were just here, and the, you know, the young students like, what are we going to name her? I don't know, named her Lily, she was on her arm, and, you know, please fly away, and they wouldn't fly away. And it was just this whole moment. And so those are, when we talk about our strategic plan, and we talk about our goals, and we talk about what we're measuring and all of that, it's hard to measure sometimes these moments of learning that take place particularly when we have lots of authentic learning experiences, and we try to expose our students who sell through our communications or, you know, presentations, we just try to keep sharing because you don't have the opportunity that I do to go into classrooms across the district. But it is a joy, particularly this time of year, when it's nice out and they're all, like, outside too. And also, coming up, just to make people aware, we have a Transition Night. The Department of Student Support Services will be hosting Transition Information Night for families and students and IMPs. And that's for fourth and eighth grade families to join the department, and they'll talk about what the transition's like and answer questions and information to families on that. And that's something new that we haven't done. I don't know if we, we might have done it in the past, but we haven't done it the last couple of years, so that, we're looking forward to that. So what we wanted to do, I'm going to actually, before we get into the district strategic plan, I'm going to ask Dr. Cheryl after to come up, our Assistant Superintendent of Schools, to share some good news. Some updates.
Yeah, I'll say some good news and some kudos. And yeah, so delighted to be here tonight to share with you the good news that we have, we have earned another grant. And, yeah, and a lot of the work, a lot of the grants that we've received really focused around supporting math instruction this year. And so as I kind of looked over it, it kind of struck me as it would be nice to kind of just lay on the table here. We've had the Acceleration Academy, for which we received over $100,000. We had that program run in February and April, serving over 100 students throughout the two programs. We had, we just recently learned that we were awarded $80,000 for an extension of our summer programming, which will provide supports academic and social, emotional, and kind of like a camp-like atmosphere with, that will extend our already existing ESY program, but also kind of provide a longer duration, so families in Menden and Upton may have the ability to have their children in the program from 9:00 to 3:00. And so we're excited about that, and we're getting right on to hiring. So if you know anyone who's interested, let's start spreading the word, because we have precious little time to get this going. And then finally, we're, we received word just last week that we have received another $20,000 for math curriculum supports as well. So that's over $200,000 for supporting our academics specifically in math, and I thought it was worthwhile sharing.
Great, you're fantastic.
So the kudos, I'm even more excited about. And that's because we're about to share with you a whole ton of really exciting things, not like in a laundry list, but as Maureen just mentioned, kind of the highlights of some of the things that this whole community has been working on and really is excited to celebrate. And underlying all this work, we've got a lot of people doing work, and a group that's not here presenting to everyone, that really needs a huge, huge shout out, are our teachers, who are, of course, we know, serving our kids every day in the classrooms, and also are behind the scenes in just about everything that you're going to hear about tonight. And some of the things in particular that, that I really love about this community is their involvement in the committees and the professional learning, that, and the, you know, openness of their classrooms that really lead to better outcomes for kids. So we have folks, you're going to hear about things tonight like PD, you know? And we've got a committee of teachers on this PD committee that have really been liaisons with their buildings about what teachers need and creating programming that really works for teachers, and that has really, you know, shown results in the classroom that we see when we do things like go on learning walks for our Bridges Curriculum, where we have a couple of teachers at the middle school who've opened their classroom to let not just their colleagues come in and see them teach, so they can learn the curriculum better, but colleagues from other schools come in, creating those relationships that really build practice. We have a D cap team that just, you'll hear about the D cap, the District Curriculum Coordination. And, and a whole bunch of educators that worked together to really update this resource and do it in a way that they thought would be really useful for their, themselves and their colleagues in several ways. And, and we also have, you'll also hear about our work with equity, diversity, and inclusion, and the same thing. Teachers are, teachers and students are involved in this group. And their, their voices are really instrumental to moving our equity audit forward, our ongoing work with that, and to creating the outcomes that you're going to hear about here. So I just wanted to take a minute to recognize that, because, yeah, we're sitting here presenting to you, so you can hear about all the good stuff, but there are people behind the scenes that really made this happen.
It's great to hear. There's a lot of, a lot of good work and a lot of great work.
So, you want me to go back or stay?
You can stay there. And Dave, do you want to come on up?
Sure.
So what we're going to do, Sam, do you mind pulling up the presentation? So one thing, as Cheryl just mentioned, we wanted to give some end of year highlights related to our strategic goals. And in the last meeting, if you recall, I went through my goals, and obviously some of my goals were closely tied to some of the goals in the strategic plan as well. We're deciding, we're not going to, I'm not going to go back everything I did in the last meeting, but we're just going to pull out some other outcomes and highlights. And once, if you noted throughout the year, we were very intentional in highlighting our progress throughout the year related to these goals. So earlier in the year, Dave presented about Priviley, and we presented about iReady and our mid-year data, and all, and some of the highlights from the schools as well related to their school. And so here, I think you're going to be excited to hear some of the outcomes that we've had by the end of this year. So just as a reminder, we have four main strategic objectives that drive a lot of our work in the strategic plan. And for everybody at home who's watching as well, we are in our fourth year of a five-year strategic plan. And every year, we identify some objectives and initiatives that we're focused on and develop goals and action plans that we've worked through. So if we go to the next one. Thank you. So here you have the overarching strategic initiatives that we hit upon with some of our work. And a lot of them will fall into different buckets and categories. And one framework that you've heard the entire year is how we are focused on understanding our students, then supporting our students, and then engaging with our students. And you'll see a lot of connections in those categories as we give highlights through our initiatives and our goals. So if you go to the next one. So our first strategic goal was related to communications. I did talk a lot about this in my last, in the last meeting related to my own goals. But our focus and communications is always in there as an ongoing goal. We're always looking, you never wrap it up and say, okay, we nailed it with communications. There's always a new aspect, and we're always getting feedback to improve. One thing that we've been working on this year is related through partnering with our community members and also looking at new ways to communicate. We talked about social media in the past, and also communicating our budgetary priorities. Go to the next slide. So this is pulled from when we originally shared the goals at the beginning of the year. I'm not going to go through each one. You have all received our entire breakdown and update, and that's our tracking sheet. And just to give you a sense of how our tracking sheet document worked, the leadership team periodically, it was always in our agendas for our leadership team meetings, and we would come back to it throughout the year and, and check our progress at, do we need this mark? Okay, do we need to move the date, what's coming up next? So it would be red in the beginning of the year, and we had some green and yellow. So by the end, you want it mostly to be green, some yellow, hopefully not too many red. And we felt, we had some great success and progress over the course of all that. And some of them in yellow are things that we're identifying that are going to be carried over into the next year. And our goal is to have a lot of continuity in our work between the years as well. So with communication, here, we talked a lot in the past about website, celebrating learning, and we talked about budget, and I'll give a highlight in the next one on budget, transparency. Sometimes we hear questions about being more transparent with the budget, and I'm just really excited about the progress that we've made this year. This is one of the first years that we've had visible presentations at school committee meetings about the development process from key departments and key drivers. So it's, and that's all been accessible on our website, on the budget page throughout this year. And so this, I just cut and pasted from our webpage, just so if people are unaware that that's there, that's, we've been building upon that, as well as our budget Subcommittee information as well. And we're always looking in CJ and come forward with different ways to present information in a more visual, visually appealing fashion, or try to explain it better in the budget book. But we can always keep improving, but we have made big improvements this year, I would say, in regards to budget transparency. Go to the next one.
One other piece that I thought was important, and we'll talk more about this in the authenticity segment, is the last piece, partners in learning. And what we've really tried to do is put an emphasis on engaging the community to come in to our schools, to draw from the knowledge base within our school, not just within the Menden-Upton community. So we've got Lauren Tangler here, who served on our financial literacy project, but also experts who are beyond the community, thinking a little bit more globally. Johanna Unzada at NIMCO has developed a partnership with two podcasters who came in for part of our Inspired Learning Days. The other benefit of having, engaging The other benefit of having, engaging the community as partners in learning is it allows them to observe the work that's going on and feel like they're being a part of it. So we get a two-way benefit from that communication strategy of not only drawing upon that expertise, but also allowing them to see what's going on in the school. The other thing we do for our hashtags is we make a lot of that work really visible. Right? So the M U R S D and M U R S D Inspires, if you search it on Twitter, you're going to see a lot of the exemplars of this work. And it's another means of communication to make teaching and learning more. The other piece of this is the upcoming technology plan, which is in its final stages. As you may remember, we had several meetings with groups of teachers, administrators, and again, community partners who gave their input, a lot of folks from the tech sector. On the left is the image of those who are participating. On the right is our outcomes from our meeting, which did a back to the future protocol where we looked where we wanted to be in 2025 and then talked about the state of where we are in 2022 and then looked at goals in terms of teaching, learning, what does technology look for, look like in terms of communication? What does it look like in terms of leadership? What does it look like in terms of, most importantly, the driving force of that budgetarily? So we'll be circulating a draft or the closer found draft to the committee that developed it shortly and then to you before the end of the school year.
One thing I can add with that technology plan piece, it's perfect timing and there's a reason why we're doing it this year, too, is because a lot of our work and even my entry plan, when I present some of my entry plan findings at the next meeting, is all a lead-in, it's building up to setting the stage for the next strategic plan, which is the work of next year, is to start developing our plan for the future. So a lot of this, we're, you know, taking in information, we're learning, we're listening, we're identifying our next goals. And that tech plan is going to be really instrumental of working together with the overall strategic plan. Let me do that. So the next slide, we, our goal number two is related to MTSS and to improve multi-tiered systems of support and focus on equitable access and meaningful, great, appropriate learning. And a lot of this work has been increasing staff understanding of inclusive practices as well as the application of tier one supports. And you'll hear a lot about our work with data as well. For the next slide, you will find that most of our work is about building knowledge related to MTSS, but also building in data inquiry cycles, which Cheryl is going to talk a little bit about in the next slides. Can you click it one more time?
There you go. I accidentally didn't get it.
It's very close.
It's amazing.
So what I'd like to do is I'd like to just share a couple of like the big pieces of this work focusing on MTSS. MTSS is a framework that kind of guides everything that we do. And our D cap is a resource that we use within that framework. And the D cap is a resource that is required by the state for all public schools. And it sometimes is one of those things that like folks do because it's required and it's checked off the list. And I, I'm sitting here today to say, we had a whole bunch of thoughtful people come around the table working with this document that's already one of the best that I've seen to make it even more useful for teachers in this next cycle. And we did that in a very cross-school collaborative way. So there were members of, there were student support providers and teachers and administrators all sitting around talking about how we can best support students in tier one instruction. And we did it, but we updated it by incorporating some really important things that in fact would make it more useful for teachers and accessible for the community. So we made it digital as well as in print. The digital aspect of it will allow us, allowed us to embed links in the document so that it's easy to navigate through the document and also so that the links can attach to resources that teachers can use to really understand what are some of these things they can do in their classrooms to really accommodate the needs of their students. So if the resource suggests something, the idea is they'd be able to click on that and then maybe go to a video or go to a pamphlet that will explain it better. And they'll be able to actually operationalize what's in the D cap in their classroom in that way. We, once we had a draft, we embedded it with the whole MERS community so that they could provide additional feedback. And we, one of the other things I'm really proud of with this group is they took the ownership for really bringing it back to their colleagues. So we had Allison Klisch and Allison Towne presented at NIMUC, for example, the work. And it was really, it's always really well received that way when folks are working together and then are able to explain the final product to their peers. So this is a new resource which you'll be able to access real soon, either in print or digitally or both. And hopefully you'll be able to take a look and see some of the things that we've added to it that really make it useful. Next, Sam. So here's another big piece of MTSS. And this is, MTSS, as we know, as a framework, helps us to understand whether we're doing a good job in our tier one instruction and what we need to do to essentially attend to student needs and accommodate their needs as well. And so data, what data inquiry does for us is it allows us to essentially prepare as a group to understand how students are doing. It allows us to look and examine the data. And that data could be buried. I think one of the things we think about readily is looking at MCAS scores or iReady, which we have done, actually. And there's so much more that data that we can use to really explore and understand how students are doing. You'll see an image of high school teachers looking at Panorama, which is a social emotional tool where we surveyed folks. And you can also gather the data by going through classrooms and making observations or looking at student work and figuring out what you're seeing in student work. But one way or the other, we're cultivating practices throughout lots, in lots of different spaces at every single building to be able to organize around this and to be able to utilize the data to say to ourselves, so how's it, how's it going? And how are, how are students doing? And where might be some places that we need to adjust our practice? Or where are the students that maybe need some interventions or some supports that we can provide in a different way? Data inquiry then goes to actually developing a plan. So once you have the data, what are you going to do about it? And we've seen this at the elementary schools where they've actually gone through cycles where they've looked at data and they've said, okay, well, we're going to try this next. And we're doing that not just with iReady data, but again, with data from Panorama and looking at our new bridges. The picture that you see in the bottom right is a photo taken from our learning logs where we collaborated with Bellingham. And we had some teachers open their math classroom. There's a whole bunch of adults in the room watching the kids as they're doing what they usually do and also checking out how the teacher is bandaging with the curriculum so that later we can hop out of the classroom, debrief together, talk about the decisions, the instructional decisions that the teacher made, kind of like what doctors do when they're rounding, right? And the last picture in the, kind of rounds out the cycle, but not to be finished, right? Is where we really implement the plans and then we reassess. And so here you'll see one of our teachers implementing bridges, right? And doing some of the tweaks that we suggest as we're going through these rounds. So this process goes, a lot of people see it as like a helix, it just keeps going around and around. But the idea is that when we take responsibility for our instruction, that when we use data to see how we need to address that collaboratively, we can come up with the best plans for kids. And we can work together to kind of coach each other and help each other implement them in a way. So that's a big part of this. And I feel like we did a lot of work in all these areas, really preparing well for it.
So moving on to, and we'll have time for questions. I'm assuming you may want to just ask questions at the end. Like if you want to stop us, like we didn't say that in the beginning. But our strategic goal, our third one is related to SEL. And this is about reconnecting with our students with a strength-based approach where students are known well, celebrated, nurtured, and have a sense of belonging in that social, emotional, performance integrative PK through twelve. We have two buckets in this category. One related to Thrively implementation, which you have heard about kind of the beginning stages of that at the beginning of the year. And we'll give you some highlights at the end of the year. And also our work with our EDI team that was developed last year where we created our vision for EDI. And one of our audits that came out of the end of last year with our teachers is they were asking for culturally responsive teaching practices, ways to support students in the classroom. And so therefore, that led into our book studies that Cheryl will talk about, but led into some of our work this year. So basically, part of our process in the cycle ourselves with PD is we learn what the teachers need as well. And then we try to implement that in the following year or on the spot.
So looking from a SEL standpoint, one of the biggest focuses of this year is understanding our students. And I think John and Mary Ann really set a great framework of understand, support, and engage. And I think that order was very intentional and very purposeful that until you understand, it becomes part of your support and then engage the students. There have been three primary tools that we've used to do that this year, one of which is the Portrait of a Learner scholar profile. And that's in part to help the student get to know him or herself. The profile's grown immensely over the last couple of years, starting with the cohort thirty-two in 2019 to forty-seven, I think, in 2021, and now much more expanded into the sophomore year. And it allows the student to see themselves, the link between his or her interests or their interests or their passions, their curiosities, the portrait of a learner that we developed as a community, and then also themselves. And then by putting it out forward, it helps the teachers to better get to know the students as well. Additionally, we've been using Thrively through the SEL lessons each grade span, high school, middle school. Middle school is broken up into six, eight, and then three, five, just for age-based purposes, then maybe the K two. With three months' worth of lessons where students would reflect on prompts related to developing social, emotional competencies. Again, dual benefit of the students being able to respond to the prompts to better understand themselves, but also to have the teachers be able to read the journal reflections. Looks a little different at each of the levels. The high school had a great advisory model where this lived. At the middle school, it was handled with each department monthly. And then at the elementary level, the teachers are kind of doing in the whole group lesson because SEL is embedded in their work in a larger part throughout the course. Sam, would you mind moving on to the next slide? Another main tool that we were using is Panorama. And the reason why we put this screenshot is that we not only appreciate the survey data that comes out of it, but we've specifically invested, if you can look on the left-hand column in the disaggregation data. So while, you know, some of the self-actIVITY and self-management may be strong, overall allows us to drill down to see if that's the case in the different grade spans. What about some students who have special learning needs? Or what about some of our demographics in terms of racial and ethnic groups? Are they having different struggles that we can really target? So hold on for just one second. So that kind of takes a look at needs. But on the flip side, we've also got the Thrively data through the strengths assessment that tells us about who our students are from a strength standpoint. Tells us, you know, what their top highlight areas or what they are aspirationally, so what they want to be when they grow up, what are their interests, how do they identify in terms of SMARPs? And it gives teachers a breakdown by all of their classes, but principals can see it as a whole school and individual classes as well. So we've got a balance in terms of a strength-focused data and also a needs-based data. That's from another Cheryl.
All right. So as Maureen mentioned a little while ago, one of our main focuses in this part of the strategic plan is attending Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion because we can't really attend to social, emotional learning unless our kids feel safe and included and they have equal access to everything. So here, we have a team that is, again, working behind the scenes to kind of guide stuff. And before my arrival, the district was able to identify this text, culturally responsive teaching, as a really good next step. And this text, for this text, we've offered two book studies for our educators where we get together in small, we do it on Google Classroom. And then this year, we've been getting together in small groups to have discussions about this and also to generate ideas that we then be able, been able to embed into our weekly updates for educators and offer things to try, challenges or bring to your team meeting so that we can try to, even those who maybe aren't reading the book can try some new activities that are part of learning how to be more culturally responsive. In March, we had Dr. Colleen Warren come back to the district. And she gave a keynote, followed by two very well-received workshops for educators that really helped us think about how we can recognize and become more aware of our unconscious biases and also strategies, classroom strategies for attending to microaggressions in the classroom. And so these workshops, as I say, were very well-received. And we have the EDI team thinking about what could be next steps for some of our PD moving on to 2022, 2023. We also have the EDI team working on different deliverables that came out of some of their visioning during last year. And one of those deliverables is the creation of a culturally responsive calendar that will essentially include holidays from lots of different backgrounds so that we can essentially be aware of different cultures in our midst and so that we can basically use it as a guide to the academic year. So that, along with some of the ongoing curriculum work, that I really just wanted to take a minute to share how it also dovetails into this. Because when you talk about Project Lead the Way and you talk about project-based learning, these types of strategies are inclusive practices at their core. They're designed to make sure that every single student has that experience in the classroom so that they're not leveled, they're all engaged in writing and analyzing and drafting and making their work the best possible as a, as a, as a group. And these types of experiences, these groups hold up because of their attention to equity, diversity, and inclusion.
Our fourth goal is related to authentic learning. We have lots of highlights here about to hear related to authentic learning to round out our four goals. A big piece of that, too, is a lot of our work is, some of it's been end-of-year celebrations and work related to authentic learning as we head into that engage phase of the three levels here. We broke up, if you go to the next slide, please. If we, we broke it up into two categories, our continued work with Portrait of a Learner and also just the focus on creating authentic learning experiences for our students.
So the first aspect of that is taking the Portrait of a Learner competencies, particularly the ICANN statements that NIMUC has done a great job setting the pioneers and putting them out in the forefront into Thrively. And what's the benefit of that is, is that it allows students to be able to identify pieces of work or what Thrively would call highlights that can be collected and then tagged with each of those Portrait of a Learner competencies. Teachers can then either accept them as evidence of that competency or send them back for revisions. It also has the dual benefit of being able to put it up as a public profile. So we now have that portfolio piece from a technological standpoint that we've been lacking for these pieces. And you can see on the left is an image of the competencies, on the right, an example of the action plans with the ICANN statements. We also spent some time with the middle school faculty revisiting their ICANN statements that they drafted in 2019. Went to a protocol of treasure, tweak, and trash just to see if they still held up after extended amount of time. Rewrote them, but I think the consensus with the middle school and even in talking with the elementary school is to try to develop a ICANN statements that are universal across the K twelve. Will look a little different at each of the grade spans, but the expectation in terms of ICANN would stay the same. So.
This is my favorite slide. So yeah, so did you go to this day or these days, the one at Misco or the one at the high school? And if you didn't, no worries because there's another one coming up.
And if you didn't, no worries, because there's another one coming up. This slide is basically meant to represent our Inspired Learning Days, which really are the district-like collaboration around making learning authentic. And the Inspired Learning Days really have the purpose of connecting students with the community in ways designed to help them think about what they're learning in the classroom in the real world, basically. And so I'm not going to get all into this. You're going to have to visit in June if you want to see it, really. But you can see that these are just like a few images from some of the really cool things that are happening, like from juggling to cooking classes to, as Dave mentioned, talking about doing podcasts and financial literacy. But two of my favorites represented on these slides are first in the upper, our left-hand corner, that is one of our students who is work, a high school student, who is working with a classroom of middle school students on creative writing. She's helping them kind of bring their stories to life. And so the community is not just a community, like although it includes the fire department, it's also our own community, helping kind of open our eyes to things that are really cool and interesting. And this student has published her own stories and works with a group. And she even, as I was talking to her afterwards, she offered tutoring to kids during the pandemic out of the goodness of her heart, just to keep them writing. So here she is now, bringing her talent to the middle school. So the other thing that I loved, and we'd have to hit play again to see it go, but oh, sorry, Sam, is this line dancing. There are a group of students who went to the senior center during the first Inspired Learning Day, and they line danced with everyone. And to me, this was just, it was just joy because it was about different members of our community coming together with the kids being the ones who felt a little bit shaky, wobbly, right? But they're in there doing it with these guys that do the line dancing every week. And you should see the laugh, the laughter and the smiles. It was awesome. So highly recommended in June.
One of the things we also do is we try to draw a lot on external expertise. So while we've been focusing on authentic learning in the near term, there are groups and individuals who have been doing this for quite some time. I think one of the catalysts for this is, you know, John wrote this article on Getting Smart by Michael Nehoff about the nine ways to make learning more authentic. And kind of like how this podcast started in the first place, you know, we were talking to Peter Duett, we were reading a book study with Peter Duett, and we wondered if Peter Duett would be willing to talk to us. So we reached out to Michael, and Michael was more than willing to come on the show. And what was really great about that is he served as the springboard for our PD day. And so as teachers were going to apply his nine strategies for creating more authentic learning experiences, he got to help frame it with teacher-based questions. So we try to tap into external expertise. Michael's from California, the group on the left is from Chattanooga, Tennessee. They've been instrumental in helping us set up our Inspired Innovation Center, doing, sitting at the work between PBL and STEM Learning and integrating that through Making. We've also had a conversation with somebody in our own backyard, Colleen Meany out of the Parker Charter School in Devens. Again, another school that's been doing authentic learning for quite some time that we can, we can draw from. And then we had one more interview we didn't discuss this year. Oh, Greg Baer from the Remake Learning Group out of Pittsburgh. So we really strive to bring people of expertise to our school community so we not only just do this work in our silo and try to make sense of it ourselves, but to get that perspective that helps kind of unlock things for our colleagues.
In addition to doing things at the district level, we're doing, we're incorporating authentic learning in every single building. And NIMAC has been one of the buildings that really has been kind of leading us in creating a vision in many ways for this work. I have to credit John and Mary Ann for really seamlessly weaving together so many different things that really focus on this work. They started, they, one of the things, the thread that I'll weave right here is they had a staff meeting where they kind of went on this understand, support, and engage theme. And they asked teachers to kind of brainstorm the activities and lessons that they thought were the most engaging. And teachers came up with what they called the greatest hits list. And they shared this list with everyone. So people were at once getting ideas from each other, but then they went a step further and they created a bank of community resources that teachers could then tap into so that if you really want to make your work more authentic, you can take what you've already started and make it better. And they started talking about, like, is the term leveling up?
Yes.
Leveling up their lessons, just wanted to make sure I got that right. So then you go forward another week or so, and they're hosting a lead learner workshop, which is a different kind of construct at the high school. Students are involved, and we're sitting there wrestling with Dr. Nehoff's article. We're trying to come up with a collective definition of what authenticity is so that we can then talk about these activities that are happening and use them and create this graph over here that shows us where, with the aspects of authenticity, we need to work on, right? Where is it not quite authentic? And where are we soaring? What portions of the graph are off the charts? So that kind of activity really like brings to life this concept. It could just kind of sit on, it could be something that people just talk about, but you see people actually using it here at the high school. So they've gone a step further. The last bullet talks about how there's a tool that educators will be able to use that will help them look at their lessons and their learning and make their lessons more, more authentic and dot, 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 more to come.
So in Misco Hill, again, taking a different approach to authentic learning, learning through doing. I think the big highlight this year has been the Project Lead the Way implementation. We now have a five to eight pathway for students. Students have at least one opportunity to experience a Project Lead the Way module, and seventh grade have upwards of two experiences. That can take, at the eighth grade level, we've got our science and technology classes where students are building roller coasters with marbles and foam to go through applied physics. They've dealt with oil spills. They've learned how to make ice cream through, you know, changing the chemical reactions with ice. They have, they're on their way, and if anybody in the community is out there or if any members of the community, they'll be building roof Goldberg machines. And so need a little help with the extra hands-on. But I really have to commend Lori Holloway and Casey Rhodes, who've taken this on and just run with it this year. But also our technology teacher, Beth Gervais, who's our first Project Lead the Way teacher who is running, ran the design and modeling class for our eighth grade students, and then is running computer science for innovators and makers, which teaches students programming through physical computing. And then Britt Kahler, who's just done an amazing job with our automation and robotics. Dr. Cohen talked about the Misco Hill amusement park where students were doing some really complicated prototype rides that involved multiple motors, multiple gears, and the motors were interacting with each other to create your teacup rides, but also tilt-based rides and roller coasters. It was just really amazing to see the growth in such a short amount of time. And this also leads into opportunities for students to interact with external partners to get feedback. So ASA, our granting agent, came in to view the automation and robotics amusement park, but they also stopped in the IIC to see an incredible unit that Jen Parent's doing focused on wind turbines and wind energy, having students do scientific inquiry to learn about blade design and then testing that, those designs using cardboard and then also wood to see if it can, you know, lift weights and what is the energy output from a multimeter or kinetic power alike? And just, you know, just hugely impressed with the work that we're doing. Similarly, in the MassSTEM Hub, who's been a fantastic partner, they have an opportunity for students to submit their work. The existing roller coasters or the prototype roller coasters as they were in the design phase were submitted to people within the technology industry, and students were able to get the feedback on that as well. We're also proud, we announced at a prior meeting, that Misco's part of the school leader, leadership network for project-based learning. So a small team of fifth and sixth grade teachers along with Dr. Patrick, Mrs. Mannion, and Mr. Pommo, who are starting to lay the groundwork for our PBL implementation at Misco. They did a mini-slice where they were to take and evaluate a project-based learning experience for the May PD day. But what's really exciting now is that there is a three-day institute that will be hosting at Misco to, for a larger group of our teachers to take a deeper dive into project-based learning. And one of the hallmarks of project-based learning, it's not a really, we can't call it the gold standard of project-based learning unless there's an authentic audience. So now it becomes a hallmark embedded in what we do, not just an add-on or a nice-to-have of an essential. And then finally, at the elementary schools, I feel like, you know, authentic learning is a daily occurrence there. So there's a lot to pull from, but just in terms of the quick highlights, you know, learning about the plant and insect life cycle through the community garden, which Dr. Cohen referenced earlier. Kids, kids are learning about that experience through observation, but also by doing. Mystery Doug and that science inquiry process, both in terms of, on the left, you see fourth graders in Mrs. Evans' classes engaged in an archaeology project, those simulations. On the right, Mrs. Lopes' class is doing a choice-based inquiry into a topic, I believe it's about an animal of their choice, and then presenting how they found it. The Bridges program is deeply rooted in authentic problems, so all of the mathematics, there's a direct emphasis on real-world scenarios. The, excuse me, Upton's Memorial Elementary School had the fire department come in for kind of a touch-a-truck, but also fire safety, which was a big hit from the students. And then finally, we're completing that Project Lead the Way path with our computer science program at the high school next year, but also fourth grade is starting to pilot Project Lead the Way this year. And we had a great PD session on our last PD day, exposing the teachers to the process of activity, project, and problem by going through a beam stop activity, the duck instruction function. So again, at, you know, Mrs. Gallagher and this, they'll do a fantastic job of supporting the fantastic educators we have down there to make authentic learning a part of just on each and every day that are on our campuses.
That concludes our overview and highlights. So I don't know if you have any specific questions, comments, but we'll take them. Thank you to Cheryl and Dave, too, for presenting and the logical leadership in this work as well, along with the teachers and teams that have been involved, mentioned already.
So this is all stuff that's happened since, like, late last year, right? Or early, I'm sorry, early in this school year. So that's, that's pretty impressive. So like, I mean, it's very interesting because at least as far as I can remember in the school committee, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the tracking progress document, and I'm looking at how much reading is in the document. That's actually very nice to see. We don't have that much reading all the time, so it's, it's not good stuff like this. And the other, the other thing I'm curious about, when we go through the, when we go through the activities that we've got and we, we have a concept for what we want to put in place, we obviously have to go through the staff to enact that. There's a lot of effort to make sure that that happens. Do we have, you're in the middle of implementation now, do we have any feedback from the students themselves? Both, both in terms of their subjective feelings, but also the empirical understanding of have they improved their understanding of the subjects that they've been taught? Do you have any kind of, any kind of feedback like that available? I can expect you to, but if you do, that's fantastic.
So it's a little early yet. One of the big drivers, let's just take the ASA grant. So our middle school program has a pre and post survey about their attitudes towards a lot of our programming, but also their exposure to career development pathways. Last year, amongst the grantees, we saw one of the most significant growth of anybody last year, and we've only increased the number of hands-on learning from, from last year, particularly in this last couple of months with the Project Lead the Way pieces. So we're excited to see what that survey data looks like. We have more of those conversations, anecdotally from teachers, and what we're observing in terms of engagement when I'm in those classrooms and in the IIC. I see a lot of joy, I see a lot of behavioral engagement, but it's a wide range of data that we could be collecting on it, but so far the indication is in this group.
Yeah, that, that would be very interesting to see because just like you're talking about, you're talking about the helix and, yes, absolutely, there should be sort of a circular approach. Part of the dataset that you're capturing is the impact it has and whether or not, let's say, project-based learning concept is working or is not. So that, that would be very interesting to see.
And to what you're saying, too, I think there's a need to, like, you know, we'll have data as we go through this, through some of these tools that we've invested in in terms of student outcomes. What you just touched on, which I think is really important as well, is how individuals, how students are engaging with these things? And do they like them? Do they, are they interesting? Like, are they compelling to be able to, you know, get involved in whether their curriculum or the tools that we're using, like STMAP and iReady? And, you know, me sitting down with a couple of students the other day as they were working on this, having conversations, I can tell you that everyone was like, yeah, I like this. So for now, that's a good start, right? Like, kids are excited about some of the places that they're going.
Yeah, that's excellent. And to piggyback off that quickly, I'm also seeing teachers make adjustments based on the feedback they're getting from students. To give a small example, the, for as nice as the Project Lead the Way modules are and resources, the interface is kind of cumbersome, right? It's like a Salesforce escape piece. And so what I've seen teachers do, particularly Beth Gervais and Lori Holloway, they've been restructuring the resource materials to make it more user-friendly for the students. I know that Beth Gervais is like, is looking at like a canvas-based modules to make it more user-friendly for the students. And then again, Jen Parent trying to make it more authentic with trying to frame the win challenge around like a local company, trying to, you know, use it as an engagement point for students. So I think that that's both like a, there's formative and substantive feedback going on, and teachers are regularly adjusting based on the form of feedback that they're giving to their students.
I would also just make a comment that a lot of the stuff that you talk about here seems like it'd be very appropriate at the earlier ages. I'd be curious to understand what the impact is at the older ages, because I know, I know having interacted with high school students now for a couple of years, a lot of them are saying, I need the information, I need, I need the information in order to get the test done. See what I'm saying? They're, they're much more practical about their approach and they want the information to get done. The project is in the way in some cases.
Yeah, I mean, well, it's, it's the research around surface learning, strategic learning, and deep learning, right? So a lot of high schoolers, and I won't speak for you, but you have to be strategic given all the demands on your time, and sometimes that, that project can be a challenge. So I think, to speak for myself here, I think trying to frame it around a less is more approach and the PBL approach to not make the project the deserved, but the embedded process. So that is the learning, is going to be critical to meeting your needs and also the more engaging learning.
And it supports all that we're doing through Portrait of a Learner, because those competencies are created because we know that doing well on the test is one of the things that we need to do. There are so many others that we need to be able to apply and help students have experiences to be able to develop. And that's all part of this project-based model. You have to work with a group and refine your idea and present to an authentic audience.
You can add a lot of it's rooted in the standards suite. And so if it's done well and it's connected closely to the standards, then those achievement outcomes will improve the, also the competencies there as well, as long as both of those are in for twenty minutes.
So how do we measure that? I mean, we've talked about iReady, for example.
Yeah.
And you showed some very high-level data, and we'll talk back, but there's no data yet that can be shared with the parents, and the parents are very eager to see that. And I know a question was asked about grade-level data and things like that. So I guess, I guess my question is, how do, how do we, how do we measure that? I mean, these are all very good things, and you hear very positive feedback. People, you know, learn in various different ways, and I think, you know, we're reaching students in new and innovative ways across all grades. You can see that tremendous network of students, the teachers that gravitate towards, they're doing an incredible job. I think the question sometimes you get asked, if you can't, I mean, I don't, I assume the senior student, that is, how do we measure the outcome? What you just said, you know, you
What you just said, you know, you kind of got, you know, competencies over here, and you've achieved it over here. What does that mean? How should we look at that, I guess, like?
Sure. So I, it's, it's a really good question. Because as we know, what gets measured gets done, right? And I think it's kind of two-pronged, right? Because as our Maureen was alluding to, it's standards that are embedded in some of these things. So it's not like we can stop caring about traditional assessments, right? But when you talk about how we measure some of the competencies that are embedded in project-based learning, I think they come out of, like, the community essentially determining what makes a skillful, helping with a collaborator or a solution seeker, or, and how are we going to define, essentially, how do we progress in those competencies? And so I know that there are conversations afoot now talking about, you know, mastery and how do we define mastery in some of these competencies? And that's work that we'll have to evolve as we're focusing on developing the portrait of a learner and also bringing this project-based authentic learning together, these experiences together.
I think too, that the measurable goes along with the observable, right? So that those two go in concert. Some of the things that you value are really hard to measure. And it's easier to measure some of the things, sometimes measurements are based on what's easy with looking through. And some of the things, let's just say, engagement, joy, mood become a little bit more challenging. I think what we're trying to do is take a multi-pronged approach, get that measurable piece. So those that aren't able to address the observable have those metrics available. But also really emphasizing so that people can see, feel, and understand what the student learning experience is about. So I think having those two in concert together help us to bring a holistic picture of what the implemented up to the experience is. But you need both, to your point.
Because I think to what Sean says, some, some students look at it like, you know, the project is in the way. Other students gravitate towards the project as the point of engagement. And so I think it just is an interesting thing, because I think it's one of those things, you know, we've talked about in past, we've talked about accountability in the past and those kind of things. The question is, how are we going to look at this as we move forward to show the progress and the impact of what's being done? I think people all recognize all the, you know, the value of what's behind it. But it's the then measurable component, what does that really look like? And how do we track that we're getting better, so to speak? And I realize better is better. It's a, it can be a very static term, but it can be a very ambiguous term.
And that's how you build your metric too, is what I was saying.
Well, and it's also, it's also part of being aware of, you know, what has happened to its learner, right? And so I'll also share with you that through this process, it does help you, it, it forces you to kind of rethink, right? Because in my experience with project-based learning, the thing that I remember most and the thing that was most impactful for my learning was not our final product, right? It was this process that we were asked to go through, and the fact that I could see refinements in each iteration of each draft. And when you have these types of experiences where, you know, you're asked essentially to learn, like focus on and be aware of your learning in addition to whatever it is that you're striving to create, but not just because of it, right? Because the process is important. Then it kind of helps you, you see things in a different way. It's not just about that outcome.
Yeah, that, that's, there's no mistaking that that's a huge benefit for all, especially for the learners who are disengaged or not fitting up in a traditional approach. It's wonderful. I'm just wondering how we get to the point where we're measuring the progress as we move forward? Because then we actually justify what we're doing, what we're spending, all of the things that go into our school districts, right?
This is where it ties into our conversations about mastery-based transcripts over the years, right? So that it comes to the development of what is the rubric and operationally defining what we're looking at. So it sounds like these are all the leading steps towards building what that rubric might look like to eventually, you know, to, to, you know, we need to have a visual in our head as we talk about this. You could sort of envision the idea of having, you know, traditional standards-based measurements of grades and standardized testing, but then also having this mastery transcript to talk about some of these real world skills that we're trying to build for kids. So you're getting sort of that combination approach of understanding kids' whole learners too.
Well, there's no real standards.
But that's what, I think that's what we're talking about, is this is the process of developing what those standards want to be.
So no, no recognized standards outside of mercy?
Well, but it's based on our definition of portrait of a learner is my understanding of the process of it.
So here's one of the interesting things from one of the conversations we had as part of the Inspired Learning Conversation. So going back to Colleen and me at Parker Charter Defense. They have a narrative-based transcript. And what's interesting, it kind of blew my mind, is that on every mission staff, there's someone dedicated for alternative transfers. And so the mission staffs are proud for that type of, different types of approaches. I think mastery is kind of a way that, and John and Mary Ann know way more about this than I do, but if we're following the independent schools that send their kids to some of the most independent schools, I think that's a really kind of same pathway to them. But I think we have, if we work with colleges and universities, our guidance departments excellent. So you've got, make a little bit more latitude than we think. And it's just trying to find and define, not just from what a state standpoint might look like in terms of exit outcomes, but what we value in communicating that to schools in the most measurable and observable way as possible.
So you favor us communicate more to colleges about what we're doing in the, in the high school?
Absolutely. Well, and also helping kids, and I think this is another. Story, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
I think you've seen the research about college admissions, and that a lot of times they're, they're looking for different fits within their campus community. And how do we help our students to differentiate themselves, share what they're interested in, show how that they've explored their passions, that make informed decisions coming into college, that they're one of the more likely to graduate in four rather than six? Not that there's any wrong. I took my time getting through my doctoral process, so taking the sender is not, not a big deal at all. But I, I think that has a multitude of benefits, not just for college to be able to tell your story to an employer or a potential job, and just getting better. So we, go ahead.
Well, I look forward to hearing more as we probably get out of this year and into next.
You got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So moving on. Next is subcommittee updates. And we just had one subcommittee.
We're going to have a subcommittee.
And we're going to kick the pump under. But the, what we did for the superintendent's evaluation subcommittee, we have right now a chart, which Bill, you are the only individual who is actually.
I thought it was late.
No, you, you actually were later than usual, but it's okay. You're a lot of your, the rest of us. But we, we as a committee have not completed our, our line items on that. So we all have, we have to submit our evaluation feedback for, for Maureen, okay? And then, once we have that information, I recommend that we move to discussing this topic at the next school committee, but that's probably impractical for this one. But right now, we are in progress, are in progress on, on doing evaluations. Maureen's done all the work she needs to do. It's really up to us, it's just one, so.
Okay.
All right, so with that, I think we should table that.
Sounds great.
Okay.
So any other new business? Any other matters not anticipated? All right, so future agenda, I don't think we have any correspondences. The future of Janet and I, who will now be the Superintendents Evaluation Subcommittee, and woman at, well, that's the Jane, the next meeting. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
For Michael's last meeting.
For Michael's last.
Can you make a motion?
Yeah, can you make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn in a minute and a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, the meeting adjourned at eight, one two.